It is 7:01. I'll call the meeting to order. Regular meeting of the Mountain Home Planning Commission, Wednesday, December 18. First order of business, are there any changes to the agenda?
Oh damn. Inclusive.
Anybody?
No.
No changes to the agenda. Hearing none. The agenda is approved. We have one set of minutes from November that Faith has distributed. As they're going to have a chance to review.
Yes.
Any changes, additions, corrections? Nothing?
None.
Okay. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll move into the administrative officer report.
Okay, so I received a BCR from Michael Asfar regarding the construction of Belmont Road, which is apparently a 14 by 16 count. I also contacted Irina Rasevich regarding the Belmont Road property in Star Lake to find out whether or not they had contacted the state regarding a shoreline or wetlands permit. I didn't receive any direct response to that, but yesterday Jim Filipovic, who was acting for them, came in and said he wasn't aware that they'd done anything, but he would speak to a contact he has at the state. And at the same time, I have spoken to Laura Lugalecki, who is the person responsible for shoreline permits, who has confirmed that in fact it will need a shoreline permit. I haven't yet heard from Zapata Courage as to whether or not it will also need a wetlands permit. So I'm going to work with Laura to contact the owner to pursue this.
Is there any part of it that extends beyond the waterline?
No.
None? Okay. Then it would need an encroachment permit as well?
Yeah. The issue that has certainly created the need for the shoreline's permit is the fact that they have moved.
Land disturbance, yeah. Could it be Flipowitz rather than Filipovic?
He gave me his name. Oh, Flipowitz.
Okay.
Sorry. And also, as administrative officer, I've received a boundary line adjustment application, but that will be discussed later.
Of which you haven't yet referred to us formally.
I haven't.
You haven't made a decision on it yet. Okay. Anything else?
No. I can give you my current response on boundary line adjustment application now if you'd like.
Let's put it right where it is on the agenda. We'll go there. I don't have too much. Is there any? That's it, right?
Exactly.
I don't have too much. We are still getting little pieces of information about the Robert Guero Act 250. I think their engineer has responded to the state's request for information, so I don't know where it stands, but we know that they have at least responded. That was like a six-month delay. So we'll keep our ears open for that. You would expect there to be some sort of response from the state, and I'll forward it when I get it. I don't think we had anything else, really.
Not that I'm aware of.
I sat in on the recreation committee meeting last night. So there's a couple of things that I think could be interesting to the planning commission as well. The things that they are picking up where we left off with our work on the town plan, so that should be good. Particularly with trails and coming up with an action plan for Star Lake Recreation Area. So we'll continue to monitor that and hopefully continue to cooperate with them. I think that's it. So let's go into subdivisions. We think we do have something for the Cole subdivision tonight.
Correct.
Do you have the floor if you want to say anything about it?
I don't believe in particular. Would you like me to come up with a map?
Sure. Yes, please.
Nothing in particular from last time. The proposed subdivisions are on a single map now. I believe it should meet all the requirements.
Do you want to walk us through? Just, I don't know if we're all fresh on this, but we had two different surveys last time. And we asked, one of the requests, I think, was that they could be combined into one proposal, right?
Correct, yes. Yep, there was previously a survey done in 2010, I believe, that delineated parcels one and two. And then parcel three here is the new one. And parcels one and two were on a separate map, and then parcel three had a zoomed-in map. But now it's all on a single plat map. Yeah, I don't know.
What we have today is we have the exterior, the outside boundary.
Yep.
And we're looking for, you're requesting a three-lot subdivision.
Yes, and parcels one and two were delineated but not registered with the town previously, so this would be.
Survey the four.
Right, yeah, yeah. So parcels one and two would be split as well along this line, and then parcel three would be from the most recent survey.
And this shows a right-of-way, and I can't read that. Does it have a dwelling now, or it's just set up? It has a wastewater permit, but no dwelling?
Correct.
And this is a dwelling?
Yes.
Single-family residence. Okay, and there's no other development. Oh, this is?
That's a different one.
A shed?
Yep, there's a tiny little sugar house right there.
Here's a single-family dwelling on this one.
Right on the Y.
And is the proposal to convey this lot?
Yes.
To sell it?
Yes. Or, no, excuse me, not to sell it.
Develop it?
Just be conveyed to myself, who was previously on this deed.
This will be yours?
Yes.
Oh, okay. This is family land or something like that you're dividing between?
Correct, yeah. And then additionally, one thing that has actually changed with the map is there was previously a GMP easement that was not going to be in use, which you can see the artifact of here and here on either side, and the power.
Oh, good for you. He got that out of him.
Yeah, working for GMP Health.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Interesting. You could use your help somewhere else.
Yeah, because they're trying to move everything out to the road soon.
Oh, yeah, we're trying to get the power lines out of the Star Lake Recreation Area. With them all on the road, it would just be sort of a windmill. But anyhow, well, good work getting the easement dissolved there. Because that would go kind of right over your house site. And they have a 70-foot right of way, I believe, something like that. Andy, you can't see this, can you?
I got a pretty good look at it. Not great, but I got a pretty good look at it from the camera angle there.
Do you or your surveyor have a PDF of this?
Yes, I think we got that. It was the last one, but we just, it was the last attachment. Yes, I was learning English before I died. Yes.
So Andy, you may have that already.
Yes. Oh, okay, good.
It was the last attachment on Faith's email.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I do have a question, which, because I can't remember from the last time, this was before the commission. Is there a pending, is there a permit or application for wastewater permit from the state with respect to these three parcels? Or where do you stand with respect to that?
Yeah, there are three existing wastewater permits currently, with two of the septic systems already in place, and then a third on parcel two that will be constructed.
That's one.
Very good, thank you. Correct, yes. Right around here.
Oh, okay, this one exists.
Yes, this one exists.
So you said that there is an existing field here somewhere?
Not here, there's a, yeah, there's a number of them.
Oh, okay. So this is a current building?
Yeah.
It needs a replacement system?
No, that's just a small 16 by 20 shed. And then they're hoping to at some point build it here.
So this has an in-ground system now?
Nothing, it's just a rest.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I just pulled up the PDF. I've got it on my computer here. I can see it quite clearly.
Straightforward.
Pretty basic.
And no other anticipated building or development beyond that?
Nope.
So that would all be pretty much constrained to there, Greenworth, okay. Yeah, it goes all the way down to 103, doesn't it?
Yes.
You don't have any designs in building on that side?
Correct.
All right, you guys have any other questions right now? Commissioners?
I mean, first wastewater was like 2012, if I remember right, quite early.
John Cole is the sole owner on the deed, I believe. Uncle John.
And this, this the bridge that they're always talking about replacing? Is that the one there?
Potentially. I hadn't heard plans of replacing it, but.
There's one that's up there that would be.
There's a bridge there, but. It's a little monumentous. A little scratch.
So what is, what was, is this just historical drive?
That was recent, just a little drive there with a Connex box right here, just for storage.
A farm drive.
Okay, and we got a bag, a pretty big bag that goes down to the stream?
Yep.
So one of the things that we look at is, I believe this probably river corridor, we're probably going to want to, you know, well, this is going to go to a hearing. But one of the things we might want to discuss is whether we put an additional protective area around this. Is that something that you'd be open to, and it wouldn't constrain you and these guys?
Perhaps, yeah, I'd have to discuss it with the family, but I think that should be an issue.
Do you know offhand if that's corridor? I don't have it in my mind, but I think it probably is. This goes, this goes all the way up to.
It's just really, it's just a very far corner, I think.
This, this is the stream that goes all the way to.
If I remember right.
Yeah, it's deep.
Yeah, okay. I think this is the stream that eventually goes all the way up to Perry Farm, right? Is that the one, or does this go up to? I'll have to look at the map, but it's not something we need to decide now. Okay. Andy, do you have any questions?
I do, I do not. Thank you. I actually have a question unrelated to this. There's somebody participating via Zoom who's identified only by some numbers, and I think for the record, we ought to know who is participating in this meeting.
Yeah, I was going to ask once we've set the agenda right, but yes.
There's two there.
I understand that at least one person is, one mom and dad is Teresa and Andy Bolamis, is that correct?
You guys are on both mute.
That was them last meeting.
Yeah, I think it was. Let's do it this way. Everyone on Zoom, please identify yourselves one at a time.
Mom and dad is Teresa Bolamis.
Okay, who is 1-8455?
In the bathroom. Or getting booted.
While we're waiting, on this lot, is there any development on this lot?
I believe there's a wastewater permit approved over there, but no construction.
No buildings?
Correct.
Yeah, because it's. Interesting. The wastewater permit must use this side or something, huh?
Yeah, and I know there's a slight incursion from the uphill, from this well, but it was all approved. Ken Hollabie got their approval.
Theirs.
Yep, correct.
Now, let's see, this lot here, I think it's across the road from Emily.
Yeah, that's more across the, yeah, Emily and.
Right next area.
Yep, for sure.
Anything else? Anything else?
That's across from Emily?
Close to.
That may be her property.
No.
No?
No, that's a P. Mussey's.
No, she's got a piece on the other side of her house.
You anticipated the line there. Yeah, yeah.
So let's go ahead.
The old baseball field.
Yeah, the ballpark, yep, yep, for sure.
So let's go ahead and do the checklist, and then we can sort of finalize what we need for mylar. And I'm assuming you're ready to go, if possible, go forward with the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So map size looks right. Surveyor's standard block here. We have dates and signatures. We don't have a signature.
Yeah, and that might be.
Waiting for the final version?
Yeah, and he didn't, he sent us a mylar previously, but it didn't have the contours.
Yeah, we like those, yeah.
Yep, so he made it.
So we can just make a note to send Mr. Cole of what we need? So one thing is a signature from the surveyor. Let's see, we've got compass. These are all the owners, right? Okay. We've got the address of the property.
I think it's right here, isn't it? Are they all there?
Yes, yes.
Well, it does have the tax parcel ID, so that's pretty specific. I mean, that's probably good, but. I mean, you, you don't have a E911 yet.
Not yet, we're, that's 840 Cole Road and 726.
Okay, so we are going to need the E911 before the hearing. That shouldn't be difficult to get, I suppose.
They have a go do it.
Pretty quickly.
And you're what?
I don't see an E911 address on here, do you?
You're basically an acre and a half.
Yes, or 1.4.
So let's just go ahead and add that on if possible. Let's see what you get. I think this is probably the right scale. Looks that way.
1, 250.
Our total acreage here is what, about?
43.
Forty-something.
43 points.
That's right here.
Yeah, it says it right there. So we have 120 feet per inch? So that's actually, that's actually better than we need, I think. I'm reading that right. Let's see, this is one that we came up with. Do we have the total acreages?
Yeah.
You just showed that to me. Okay, good.
And then?
Boy, my eyes.
His is right here.
Pretty bad.
The 1 point.
Each one is listed?
Yes.
All right, good deal. And they're numbered lots. Parcel one, parcel two, parcel three in the label. Okay, with an arrow. Okay, good. Perp tests we wave? Okay. This probably doesn't reference the subject design, but we have that information in the application, right?
Yes.
We have a little wasteful to.
All right. Yeah, I don't think, I think we usually wave that on the plat. Water supplies, wells are listed? Yep, okay.
There.
So you said, okay, so let me see here. Okay, so your tank is listed here, and that's part of the, that's part of the current approved wastewater permit?
Yes.
Okay. And this is, this is the same? That says septic, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you said this one does have an approved system?
Yes, but it is not in place yet.
Okay. I guess that's a little bit of a gray area. Kind of would be nice to show that if that's really what's going to happen, go forward.
Or just have at least a proposed site.
Proposed site in a dotted line or something like that. Utilities, road frontage, access, all of them. You have a, oh, this is probably, the gravel drives are probably fairly old except for this one, right? They have one as well. And you have access permits for those? Probably, okay. That you can modify pretty easily if you don't have it. And your prospective building is not shown. We're going to want to see that too. And you have an idea where that's going to go?
Yeah.
Okay, that should be easy. Natural water course and perennial streams, this is the only one that's on significance?
Yes.
Okay. You know, class two wetlands? All right. All single-family residential development, okay, mixed-use or commercial? Any deed restrictions or other like things you inherited that we need to know about?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good, okay. So we, do we determine this is three-lot subdivision? Yep, and the fees will be as calculated from that. I can't remember whatever the sheet says. Anything else? I think that's to complete the checklist. Did I miss anything?
A little bit.
Okay. All right, so there's three tiny little corrections that we'll want to see on the final plat, and if you could get that to us, is it four?
Proposed building type, proposed wastewater stack fill, E111 and the surveyor signature block.
Yeah, all of those. And if you could get those to us before the hearing date, we can go ahead. If you, you know, you promised to get those before the hearing date, we can just schedule that now. If that works for you? Okay, is everybody in agreement that we should set a hearing date?
I agree with that.
Should we look at, look at before the next regular meeting in January? Sound good? Does that work for you?
Yeah, what do you?
Don't we, we have a timeframe that we have to publicize, and I can't remember.
Well, the holidays might interfere slightly, but if we can get, is there a paper that goes out next week?
Well, they go out, you submit on Wednesdays.
It's Christmas Day, isn't it?
I don't know what this is going to be next week.
Will it come out the day after? Well, we can check with them, but I think if all of our notice goes well, if we get a notice in this week and next week, we should be fine for 30 days. That's usually what we do. There's a checklist in the drive too.
Yep.
They only get those our next meeting.
Is it 15th?
Yeah.
Oh, so that's not even full 30 days.
Yeah, we have to move out of February.
Is there a time crunch for this, urgency? Are you trying to, okay. Can we go February, just to be sure we get the notice done?
Sure.
Okay. We want to make sure it's legal and proper for you.
For sure.
So let's shoot for.
The 19th.
19th of February for four, let's do the sixth. I honestly think a half an hour should be fine. Six, so should we do six to be sure? Have a break between? Or six thirty?
You want to do six or six thirty?
Andy, six or 6:30 before February 19?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Does that work for you?
Yes, I'll be working in California for quite a while, but someone else can attend and I can get on Zoom.
Okay, yeah, Zoom would work just fine if you can. That's good. So we're going to pick one, six or 6:30. You have a preference? You have to be here before it, so.
6:30.
Okay, there it is. Everybody agree? All right. No disagreements? Okay. By unanimous consent, we'll set a hearing date for February 19 times 6:30. Thanks.
Excellent.
Yeah, and if you can get that in PDF form and. We'll probably want it in mylar too, right? I think we want it all, all at the same time if possible. Paper, mylar, PDF, and then we'll be, should be ready to go.
Excellent.
Okay, that's pure file.
Yes.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm going to do with my tip.
There they are.
Before we continue, can I ask you again, 1-8455, can you identify yourself, please?
I feel like I'm going to say it anyway. That's not you, is it? Or you can die. Go put them in the waiting room.
On the internet, but I'm not on Zoom.
Yeah, put them in the waiting room, and then.
Then they can ask, then they can.
Okay, so let's move on. So now we have, well, let's allow Faith to give us the status on what we have.
Okay, so on the 16th of December of this, this year, a boundary line adjustment application, using the subdivision application form, was submitted to the town clerk, who then handed it on to me. This is for a boundary line adjustment between Kivi LLC, General Stork, and Enman, Austin Enman, and Page. I have had a look at the details in the application. At the moment, from my perspective, the application is not yet complete. So I can't forward it to the planning commission for their action, but I'll clarify why I think that it's not complete. The first thing is that only Alyssa has signed it, and there is no signature from Austin Enman to confirm that he is part of this application. Since it is a boundary line adjustment between two parties, I would have expected to see his signature on that as well. The other, perhaps more significant issue, is that the application states that the.
The copy you have, I believe, has two signatures on it.
They're finished, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
The, the other issue is that the purpose of the subdivision is noted as a boundary line adjustment necessary for the subject property to install a new wastewater system. But the future use of the proposed lots is described as no change in use, which is a bit of a confusing aspect of this, and I think it's not a complete clarification of what is actually being proposed. There is also a question about the maps themselves, but I think that's something to be discussed later in terms of the information that's on them and what would be appropriate for a final plat. So from my perspective, as I say, I'm not able to say that it is a complete application and forward it to the planning commission. But there has also been some discussion, I've had some discussion with the chair on this, and I think he has some additional points to add.
So, yeah, thank you, Faith. So we have at least seen the application, although we can't act on it. And I think, I have several questions about it. Hopefully that we can just clear up today. Well, we view the plat that was presented as basically a sketch plan. It doesn't qualify in any way as a final plat. I think this is the one, right? We can sort of very clearly show it is essentially just a blown-up version of what was approved by the wastewater permitting. And, you know, it's not quite there. Like, it's, it's just a scaled-up, like, essentially JPEG.
So I wasn't able to be here for the last meeting, so I apologize for that. Could we, could I take a step back and just kind of go through first what was, like, some of the. Could we, could I take a step back and just kind of go through first what was, like some of the questions from the last meeting? And then.
Sure.
Kind of go through this? Because it was hard to talk on Zoom and go through all of that. And, you know, I don't, I have no experience with town stuff, so I didn't even know that I had to, you know, come here and talk and for all these things. So I apologize that you guys didn't know about this before.
Let me just take a step back too. You could just, for the record, introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Alyssa Croner, or Tilly, either one works. I own the general store. And this is my lawyer.
I'm Chris Blanchard.
Nice to meet you both again.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have the floor. You can give us, so we've been sort of looking for the background, and that's, maybe this is the opportunity to just sort of give us the overview on what the plan is.
Because there's a lot of lines on everything. So, you know, back in the last meeting, there were three different BLAs that we were kind of discussing. So if you look at, I mean, these are obviously very small. So the, this is the current store property. It's 0.3 acres. And this is Austin, or Edman and LePage's property. So it crosses the river. So one of the questions was whether a stream is a naturally, natural boundary line. So this has a river, you know, crossing it. So the proposition would be, so one, the first BLA is, would be taking the 0.3 acre, or 0.13 acres from LePage and Edman. And then, I guess that would be here. So this is the first BLA. The second one was for the Meadow parcel. So the reason we need this large portion, you know, we've, this has been like over a year in the making just because we've been trying to figure out, you know, what is it that the septic needs? And we haven't been able to finalize it because we don't own the property. But because the, the septic, we need a well that's for commercial use. We need it to be 200 feet away from the septic field. So that's.
Public water supply.
Yeah, so that's why we needed to get a much larger area. Then the last BLA is transferring this 0.13 acres back to Austin and.
Just for clarification, it's not going back. So just to back up a little bit. So each one is considered separate. So that needs to be taken into consideration because the first one with Edman and LePage has to occur first, obviously, because that's just a simple boundary line adjustment of 0.13 acres, a little over a tenth of an acre. That obviously then creates an adjacent parcel with the Meadow property. Once that occurs, then there can be a boundary line adjustment with the Meadow property because they're adjacent properties. There's no new lots being created whatsoever. It's a merger boundary line adjustment. So that's all that's happening is the lands are being merged. Once Alyssa LLC obtains the Meadow property, there's a 0.13 acres, the same amount that is being transferred to Alyssa's LLC from Edman and LePage, is being transferred back in a third BLA, but it's just in a different location.
So that would be just kind of the same amount of land, but directly behind his.
But each one has to be taken separately. The state has already deemed the first one exempt, and that was included in the package that was submitted. And LePage and Edman signed that, and it has been approved by the state, so. But that has to occur, and then the transfer has to occur. And then the state, Chris Tomberg, will approve and issue his letter on 2 and 3. But the first one has to be completed, deeds recorded, then the second one and third one can take place. The, the question that I had or we had was that in your subdivision regulations, they don't address boundary line adjustments. And I know that there is the, the information sheet that says any substantial boundary line changes, but the term's not defined anywhere. And the checklist really doesn't apply substantial boundary changes. So, and the checklist really doesn't apply to a boundary line adjustment because there's no new lots being created. There's not a question of access or anything like that because the lots' use isn't changing. And that's why in response to the question before on the application applied, that there's nothing stated.
Which law?
The use, Alyssa's law. It's, the use is not changing. Nothing is changing as far as the use of the property.
Well, that's not strictly true. So like the, the land in question would change use. So you're proposing, and I'll let you continue, I just want to clarify this one point because it's not correct. So the land in question is the land that is currently owned by Edman LePage, which is its, its current use, its use today, its land use is in residential. So the proposal is to convert that to mixed use or commercial use in service of a wastewater system and public water supply, ultimately to reside on land that is now in the block possession. Right, is that correct?
Well, that's down the road though, for initially.
Well, it isn't to us. Right, so I understand that the proposal is a staged transfer, but we review projects, right? So to us, this is a project.
Yeah.
Right, so we, we're interested.
But I guess the initial part is first the land purchase because I would still need to get the final approval from the state for all the septic usage, right?
Well.
Nothing can be approved until it's a step-by-step process. So I understand what you're asking.
Right, and it's not just the town of Mount Holly that sees this as a project. It's the state as well. So, you know, we've been talking with them, and they are at the point where it's time to show the cards. It's time to talk about what the plan is. It's time to see the commercial wastewater design and the public water supply design. So any moment that you've been in contact with.
We've been in contact with Chris Tomberg the whole time, and.
So he does not, he does not offer us public wastewater, public water supplies.
From getting all of the documents in order, because obviously everything costs money.
Sure.
Right? So if I can't get the land for it, then it's kind of hard to get the final approval from the state.
Sure, I fully agree with that. And then we're in the same position. If you're not going to put in a, a public water supply and commercial wastewater system, we're not going to review this, this boundary line adjustment. There's no point, right? The point of this boundary line adjustment is a stepwise approach to your final design. Is that correct?
For the.
Somewhat, yes, but they can't do the review until this is completed.
They have.
The state, the state won't review everything until everything is lined up. And we can't get.
Which state? What authority would the state, are you referring?
The state agencies won't.
Which?
Agree the wastewater A and R.
I don't think that's true.
In my conversation. Well, I've, I've spoken to, I know you're saying Chris Tomberg is.
I just talked to him yesterday, and he said he wants to see.
Who did you talk to?
Chris, so he wants to see your plan.
I have a conversation with Chris the other day, and I have email communications with him, so.
That's fine.
But.
He, 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 in the limited scope of what you've asked him, he has approved a boundary line adjustment, but he's saying nothing about the rest of the plan. So, you know, it, it advantages everyone to know what hurdles you have to cross to get this done and to know what the constraints are, right? So I understand that you haven't acquired the land, but is there, you have a point in acquiring the land if you're not going to get Act 250 for it, you know?
No, so I already got email from Quinn about that.
Right.
Yeah, so I'd have to get, I mean, there would be a lot of things that I'd, I would have to go through.
Right.
To get the septic.
Yeah, and, and we're one of them. So what I think, and I'm not speaking for everybody, we'll get everybody else's opinion on this. But what, what I hope to see now, I think now is the time, this has been going on for a year, it sounds like.
Well, it's been conversations, trying to figure out what this looks like, right?
And so we should be part of that conversation.
100%, I, I mean, truthfully, I had no idea.
Yeah, no, that's, it's not putting blame on anybody.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to.
But we had to get, you know.
Because I think, like I said to you in both an email, this is something that the town thinks is worthy, right?
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't want to put up unnecessary roadblocks. However, there is a certain amount of review that we're required to do. And we are going to do it, and the state will do theirs. And frankly, the state's part will probably be much more difficult. And it will trigger, I don't know what she told you, but it will trigger momentarily.
Yeah.
Right, so that's.
So the purchase of the land wouldn't trigger Act 250. It would be the creation of the septic that would trigger.
Or a design, right?
I don't know about the design, but it was.
Not a design, a design is not going to trigger Act 250. Actually putting it in, then that's going to trigger it, yes.
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't put it in without it, that's true.
Right, that has to be.
What I was advised is that it's better to engage them early with the plan because they may be, it's going to have to be somewhat fluid, right? They're going to tell you what things you need to change. We've seen this with other projects and things that are okay, but, you know, may need whatever.
Yeah, but I think, you know, just from a land perspective though, you know, we're just.
Yeah.
From the land use perspective, we need to know what's going to, going to be on the land at the end of the day.
See, I would disagree in a boundary line adjustment. Subdivision, completely understand.
We do not view this as independent. I know you're saying that this is independent of the plan.
But it is.
We have stated that this is in service of a wastewater system, and we haven't seen what that is.
Eventually, it would be for construction, but just for the land, it's an independent. I don't, I don't think you have the authority to request that.
We don't agree with that, but.
I, I understand that, but I don't think you have authority to require that in just a land boundary line adjustment.
Well, that's a completely different conversation. If you don't believe we have authority over this matter, then there's not much, not much point in.
No, I'm saying I don't, I don't believe you have the authority to require any wastewater or future plans down the road if it's just a simple boundary line adjustment where acreage is going from one property to another.
I think that's, so do you, are you asserting that this is a simple boundary line adjustment? Is that what you're saying? That this is a simple standalone, unrelated to anything else boundary line adjustment?
Well, yes, because this has to occur before anything.
Does not say that. It says this is a step in the plan.
It's, it says that, yes, we have to do this before we do anything further. Without this, we can't do anything further. But there's nothing going forward because after this, we would then have to go through everything with Bullock property and any additional permits or anything like that. That would all have to be approved as well. My conversation with Chris Tomberg was just that. He won't officially review anything with the Bullock property until this first boundary line adjustment is completed. The survey can't even be signed or finalized until this one is completed. Yes, technically, it's not a boundary line adjustment until Alyssa owns that property and is an adjacent property.
Let me, let me address one more thing. Yeah, who? Was that Andy?
This is Andy, yeah. I, I'm not sure that's an accurate statement that I just heard. I don't, not sure that Chris Tomberg can't review anything other than this boundary line adjustment. I think his position is that he hasn't been presented with anything other than this boundary line adjustment. And that's why he is unable to review anything else. That's my understanding. I think if you presented the whole package to him.
That also, what Andy says reflects my conversation with him as well. So let's just address that now. Is there a design for the wastewater system?
We have, yeah, so we have preliminary design. Yeah, so we've been working with, there's Brooks Excavation, and then I forget one of the, the other person's name, I can.
But the professional engineer that you required is at Brooks?
Well, I, I believe it is Brooks, yeah.
Someone retain, works for Brooks Excavating?
No, Brooks himself.
Oh, okay.
But there was someone else we were working with, I just can't remember their name, to make sure that all of this going through the stream, everything would be compliant with the state, knowing that the well had to be 200 feet from the, the field, septic field. And then, you know, because initially we would have put it right behind the store, but we had to have much more land. So there's, you know, a lot that went into that.
Yeah, and that's something that we would like to see.
Okay.
That there's, there's probably a site plan that they generated, even if it's a proposed site plan. That's the kind of thing we would like to see. So the other question that goes to partly what you were saying is it has been represented to us that in the last few weeks, the blocks, and they can address this directly perhaps, have, I don't know what the phrase was, but I'll paraphrase, pulled out of the, the deal. And it was in one of the letters. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact quote in front of me.
Yeah, initially.
To what degree have they pulled out of the deal? And to what degree are you able to go forward without them?
Well, without them, there is no deal. But no, I spoke with Andy, we just don't want to do a subdivision, right? So with that, if there's a boundary transfer, then there is a deal. If there isn't a boundary tran, the, if there isn't a way to do a boundary transfer, then we can't do it, so.
Boundary line adjustment.
Yeah, sorry, boundary line adjustment.
So for what we have decided last, in, in November is that we have not yet decided whether there would be a new lot required, but in either case, the subdivision regulations would apply. And we don't agree with you that we don't have the authority to do that. And that's something you can do what you want with. But we believe the text is in the regulations that allows us to review one lot, land division or land development. So hold on one second. So, so what I'm hearing is if that is true, then you don't have a project, or I suppose you would be in a position where you would have to acquire the whole lot.
Yeah, and part of the reason it took a year was because I had to sell a property to buy this lot.
Right.
So what is the definition then of a substantial change in boundary?
So we, we don't have a sort of rule of thumb for what is not under the jurisdiction of the subdivision regulations. So some towns have a, some sort of metric they use for certain types of boundary line adjustments or even other land development that does not rise to the level of needing review, either by a quasi judicial board or administrative review through his own administrator. So, but we do not have that language, so it's discretionary. It's both discretionary from the administrative officer and on the planning commission. And in this case, there is no part of this that is not significant. This is a big deal for everybody involved, certainly for you. It has a lot of moving pieces, and it impacts the character, design, and land use plan of our village.
And I think in a good way, in a positive way, I think we can all agree that every store owner has tried to do this. And right now, we have the opportunity to get a septic for the store.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's arguing with the importance of getting the store open and getting, you need a wastewater system to do it. And that's, it's not what, you know, the issue is.
Yeah, and I just want, I mean, because I sold that property, I lose money, right? With the 1031 and, and everything, so it's just at the end of the year that I would lose that, so.
So just so I'm clear on the board's position. So your position is that the, and I'm just talking about the 0.13 acre boundary line adjustment with Edman LePage, that it's the board's position that that's a substantial boundary line change?
No, so we, we are not applying any specific metric for what has a waiver for review. So we are asserting our authority over this. We are asking to see the plans so that we can understand the land use changes. And that's absolutely standard.
Couldn't you do that after the land is bought? Right?
I don't understand.
Because, you know, let's say I just wanted to buy a field for the store. I wanted to put.
You absolutely could buy that field without review.
Right, so then, once I buy the land, then I can go and we can get that step, and I will be here with all of the septic notes and everything if they email me.
There's no guarantee that any septic or anything is going to be. There's no guarantee that any septic or anything is going to be approved. So just the boundary line adjustment, here again, I'm going back.
That's absolutely true.
The boundary line adjustment has to be viewed differently, separately from the additional wastewater things because as it is just raw land, adding to the current parcel. There's, there's no, there's nothing more than that at this time.
So one of the, so I agree with one part of what you said. There's no guarantee that any of this comes to fruition, unfortunately. There's a lot of moving pieces, there's a lot of things that could trip a developer up. And that is one of the reasons we expect all of the permits to be in place before our review, generally speaking. So for a subdivision, we expect there to be an Act 250 permit, for example.
Yeah, so I think when the time comes, I mean, I emailed you in August, right? Because you had emailed about the septic stuff back then. So when we get all of that, I will be here to show all of that. But I think looking at this from just a land perspective right now and our hope for the store is to put a septic once we get all of the approvals and everything. If we don't, then.
John?
I'd just like a clarification, if you don't mind.
Sorry, just before you ask, can I ask again for 1-8455 to please identify yourself? For the third time of asking.
Just let me nail sleep, if you want.
Pretty good.
Sleeping. How's our hope?
Okay.
I mean, kudos to you guys for getting a baby to sleep in a meeting room. I could never do it.
The question that I have is you have the authority to require the septic system plans before you approve the boundary changes? Is that correct?
Yes.
Because that's what I'm hearing. Do you also have the authority to approve the, the boundary changes without that? Do you have the, I'm not saying you will. I'm saying, do you have the authority to do that?
To specifically what?
To approve the lot line changes.
Without the subject.
Without the subject.
Do you have, I'm not saying you would. I'm not saying you don't.
You're asking, you're asking if we can do that.
Yeah, I'm asking if legally.
We have the authority to review it.
You can go either way.
Whatever that would mean.
You have the authority to go either way.
We have the authority to review it, yeah.
Yeah.
He's asking, he's asking, I think.
So I, I guess the question is, if you approve the lot line changes and for some crazy reason, the septic doesn't go through, they have four chairs in the, in the store. Is that what's happening? Is that what would happen in the final end? In other words, they could only accommodate a few people.
This boundary line change would not be deterministic. I mean, would not influence whether or not that wastewater system is approved.
No, it wouldn't, that's my point.
What he's asking, I think.
What we don't, we tend to not do. I'm not going to say for sure it's always 100% clear. We tend not to approve land use changes and certainly boundary line changes without the, the full details of what the project is and the plan is.
But if you approve the boundary line changes and nothing else happened, there would be no change in what the store could do today as it did 10 years ago. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
So you're suggesting that, are you asking me, let me ask a clarifying question. Are you asking me whether this is the only way for them to open the store?
I'm asking you if you have the authority to either requiring the septic before you approve anything or just approving the boundary line changes. Do you have that authority?
We have, speaking for my, my own opinion, we have broad authority in this.
You have both authorities.
We have broad authority here.
No, I'm not arguing.
He's agreeing with you then.
Yeah, all right, so you could do it either way.
Go ahead, Ron. A different question. You, you said the, this two parcel between Kiwi and Edmund, whatever, that is that one, forgetting Bilal, because that's another level. You're saying you want to know the intent of why they're doing this lot line change, right? That's an interesting concept to me. Again, not from a planning viewpoint. But Alyssa may intend to get the Bilal parcel, she may not be able to. So the intent, if I can, I did come for a subdivision to you guys when I divided, you know, up above. I didn't tell you I also intended on getting an easement down the road. I mean, view easement, that's all it was. I didn't tell you that. My intent, the, the fact that she intends to do something, doesn't this lot line change stand on its own? The store would be a better parcel, just owning that. They could put a picnic table there and that's it. On its own, it seems to me it stands on its own. And the idea of intent is a strange concept to me. I understand the full project view and you like that, and they're willing to talk about it. They even said that, we're willing to tell you what the whole project is. But for right now, we just want this property line change. And their intent, I don't think, in my mind, as a layperson, I don't know why that, that's a factor in this.
I think actually you just said that when you were responding to him.
Exactly.
That doesn't impact the, the rest of it.
That was my point. I guess what I'm really saying is how can we help get this project started? Because it benefits nobody.
Yeah, that's a pretty easy answer, is that we could be fully transparent with the commission and fully transparent with the Act 250.
We are being transparent.
I don't know why you say we.
It's not me, forget it.
Okay, you did say we, I don't understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean.
We're going to get this, we're going to get the rest of the board to opine on this. But what we, I am asking for, I'll ask the commission to join me in it, is a show your cards moment and let's get this to have a, be a conversation between.
But if we can look at this as just land for now and then, because.
So let me, let me then go back to what Ron says. So it is, it is not only false to say that this is just empty land. It is intentionally misleading.
Because it's the intent.
I would disagree with that.
I'm sure.
And, well, we were being open in what I submitted as to what down the road we were looking at. But that doesn't mean, has been brought up several times, that that's actually what's going to happen.
Because it may not get approval and.
Whatever, if it doesn't go, if it doesn't go beyond that, then as has been pointed out, the parcel is just larger.
Parcel's who I?
It's not anything more than that. Nothing can happen without this going forward. But as far as your review, I understand with the BOLIC parcel that you may want more information. And certainly, when it's available or when that stuff or what you're asking for, that can be provided. But what the point is, is nothing can happen until this actual transfer and boundary line adjustment happens. So this, and that was my point in the beginning, is has to be viewed separately and independent of everything else. Because this land is either for the store no matter what. Whether something ends up going further than that or not.
And we're talking about the Austin.
This has to happen, right, the Austin and Emmett, so.
May I? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Well, I guess, yeah, I think the, the focus on intent is a little misplaced. But again, I'm speaking for myself. But I, I think what we're interested in is understanding the entirety of the project. And you said what the entirety of the project is and how this piece is part of it. The subdivision application form that you submitted said that this parcel is necessary to the installation of a new septic system. That seems to be what the project is. And in the limited sense, that's a description of what your intent is. You, you intend to install a new septic system. But the focus isn't really, you know, what your present intent is and whether that might change tomorrow or the next day. But the focus is what is the plan here? What is the project? And this is a piece of it. And you're asking us to view and approve one piece of it in isolation without consideration of the entirety of the project. And, and to me at least, that seems, you know, it seems hard for me to put blinders on and pretend that this is where you're going to put a picnic table.
Well, we are in a project. And maybe some sheep in a garden too, you know, so.
I would disagree with your position on that because in the, the alternative, there's no requirement that we would have had to say anything about septic. We were in good faith disclosing that information and providing it to you. We could have kept that all silent, just done the boundary line adjustment, not told you anything.
Would not advise that.
No, but I'm just telling you.
Yeah, you are saying that, but.
But also, Act 2, Act 250 would, you know, there's so many things that's going to go into the septic part. You know, once we get to that point, it could be denied and just.
So yes, at any stage of this, you have at least three, probably four layers of regulatory approval, right? Every one of those could be provided some sort of very difficult juncture. What, what sound, it sounds like you're saying, and tell me if I'm hearing it wrong, is that you don't want to go ahead and buy the land if you won't be able to do the project.
I will buy the land without, regardless.
So.
If I am able to, from your approval, right?
You can buy the land presumably today.
I don't, I cannot buy the whole land, but this.
Because it's not for sale.
Well, no, I just don't have the money. I mean.
When you say whole land, I think that needs to be clarified.
The seven acres or the?
All the land you'll need for this project.
No, I, all the land is this, the three acres here, and that I can buy.
Me too.
You can certainly buy it after it's subdivided.
It's subdivided, but we are not doing a subdivision.
It's not a subdivision, it's a boundary line adjustment.
So we have said that this is a subdivision, regardless of whether you, so let me just clarify. Regardless of whether this Edmund, LePage, Kiwi transaction is approved as a boundary line adjustment. We have said a division of half of the Bilalac property is a subdivision. That's what we have said. You may disagree with that.
No, no, yeah, just curious.
Is that been an official decision?
Yes, in, in November, we resolved that this project as presented would require a division of land.
But yeah, I mean, I think that I would have loved to have been here in person. I just didn't know what that meeting.
Doesn't matter.
Oh, yeah.
It wouldn't matter. But the, the fact that.
To me, this should be the easy.
One of your partners doesn't want to go through our process, frankly, is, is not our problem. It is the process we have.
That's not reviewing land use changes and dividing land.
That's not necessarily accurate. They don't want to be involved with a subdivision. They were all fine to go forward with a boundary line adjustment, which really is what this is. Except again, before that can even happen, this boundary line adjustment has to take place. And it's just the land, the 0.13 acres, again, whether anything goes further than that, we don't know.
Right, but what you're assuming is that, I just have to repeat it again. So what you're assuming is that if you get this boundary line adjustment, then you can simply just absorb as many acres as you wish from the Bilalaks. And we have said no.
Right, so even if I can't get that, I would still like to pursue Austin's, Edmund and LePage property as well.
Can I ask, if, if Alyssa bought the whole Bilalac property tomorrow, she still can't get to the land? So this lot line change itself has its own meaning. Independent of, of the septic though, I know you keep saying intent, but doesn't it stand on its own?
I didn't repeat the word.
No, Andy said it should not be, he didn't like the use of it, I guess.
But we do, we do review land use changes. And to do that, you need to know what the future land use is. And we expect that applicants disclose that to us. It's very simple.
Even if I bought the whole acres.
Very simple. You just have to tell us.
Well, I am telling you, I just don't have all the documents.
Right, and that's.
Then totally. I think you're overreaching a bit on this particular scenario because we are just talking about the 0.13 acres. So I would say, so you, you've said that the application is incomplete? That's, so technically, you have not set it for anything, correct? That's what you're.
It's not before us for, for a decision.
Okay. And you're saying that in order to get it before you, you're just asking for a signature from Edmund LePage? Excuse me?
Yes.
On the actual application?
Yes.
And you have an issue with intentions of changes to the use of the property?
Well, I mean, I think the, the more complicated issue is the fact that you have said there was no change in use. And as we have discussed, there are bigger, there are bigger.
There's no change just for, so if this, this parcel here, which is this BLA, if this, which is what we're talking about, there's like two, there's plenty of parts. So there is no change in use for this part. It's if we get this entire portion, then this could have a change in use. But at the moment, just for that one.
That's not true.
But what the chair is saying is because that was part of a residential property and now it's going to a mixed, a mixed use. That that would be, I understand that. But as far as the application, whether you agree with it or not is a different story. But as far as the application being complete in order to go to your official review so that a decision can be issued and therefore then appealed to the environmental court, if that's the way that it proceeds, I'm just asking what needs to be, what are you asking for a complete application?
Well firstly, on the application itself, I want, I need Austin, Edmund and LePage to sign.
I understand that, okay.
Since they are involved. I, I know that they've signed the exemption form, but they need to sign this. And I would say that from my perspective, it would have to be clear that there is a change in use because you've now told me that this ultimately, even if you only get this piece of land, you would use it for commercial purposes.
Well, I guess it's a commercial property, but not necessarily commercial for the store. Do you know what I mean?
No.
I mean, I don't know, like we, I probably.
What they're saying, I understand. Yes, because it's going to be attached to a commercial property.
How many, how many seats are we trying to get? So that determines all the flows and everything you need for the wastewater system and your water supply.
What we've been working with is 20, because that includes indoor, outdoor, and that's probably over and above. But 20 seats. And I do want to say, I mean, with the Bilalaks not wanting to do a subdivision, I mean, they've, we've worked really closely and I just want to thank them for, over the past year, just wanting to help the store with this. So they did not have to do any of this, right?
I have a question or two, if I might. I, I think there's one other detail in the application that might, maybe it's a small detail, but may warrant some correction. I think, and I apologize, I don't have the application up in front of me, although I think maybe I could find it. Yeah. The description of the TV's property in the application says that it is a general store. Which, yes, it is, but it's my understanding that it's more than that, right? Yes, it says, question three is description of property use, it says general store. But I believe it also has two rental units in it. And I believe it also is used by, I may have the structure of this wrong, but it's used by, I believe it's used by, the property is used by Mount Holly Beer Company to ferment cider. Is that also correct? Right, so I was just saying, I, you know, I noticed that and I thought, well, it's, it's not quite complete. At least in that regard. And I, I think, and again, I'm speaking personally here, but I, I think this focus on, is this a boundary line adjustment or a subdivision, kind of misses the point. I, I don't think you can, and I'm not saying this is intentional on your part, but I don't think you can avoid the requirements or regulations just by renaming something, calling it this rather than that. There's clearly a division of land here that's for, for sale and future development.
Well, I guess at the end, there's three lots still, right? There's, we're starting with three and we're ending with three.
No new lots are being created as far as a subdivision.
I don't see that as relevant to, to the discussion. There's a division of land here, you're drawing a new, you know, this is not two neighbors saying, you know, maybe we had a mistake where we put the fence and we don't wanna move the fence, so let's just move the boundary line a couple of feet. Kivvy is buying a piece of property from its neighbor, and it's buying it for purposes of development. And that, to my mind, is a division of land that is within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. So, to just say it's not within the jurisdiction because it's a boundary line adjustment doesn't solve the problem. And that's my perspective, I'm just saying that.
And I understand that completely. The issue that goes beyond that is your subdivision regulations don't speak to this actual situation.
They do.
It is a boundary line.
Can I quote you on that?
They do, you don't read it that way, but they do.
A minor subdivision will consist of the creation of one, two, or three lots. So, a subdivision can be the creation of one lot.
But there's no creation of one lot. These are existing lots.
In the sense that, I mean, you can't create one out of one.
We're not gonna argue here about that, they're gonna have, they disagree with that. So, there's multiple places in the regulations that support, and have supported historically, the review of boundary line adjustments. And this is not the venue for arguing that, he knows where to do it. So, I fully agree with Andy, that one thing I take issue with is what seems to be on its face, a, an effort to bypass the town's review through what you view as a procedural loophole. And...
But we submitted, if you look at what was presented, we are submitted...
The project.
The septic project?
But we're just asking for approval of this boundary line adjustment. We did not ask for anything more than the BLA before.
But I'm responding to what has been said today.
I'm sorry, which project?
The overall project. So, what, it is not true, in my opinion, I think the board has said as much in November, that you can just call something a boundary line adjustment and get out of town review. So, we expect this...
But we're not trying to get out of town review. We submit an application for the review, but the review is simply just for the boundary line adjustment between Enman and Lapage.
Which follows the same procedure as the subdivision, frankly. So, one thing I just wanna make you clear is, if this is all just an exercise to help the Balaics out because they don't wanna go through a subdivision, the procedure is the same.
Well, I mean, for the septic, I would still have to, is this...
Procedurally, this boundary line adjustment is going to be the same.
Because, I mean, even if we're just talking about raw land where we put a garden, like, I mean, I'm just saying, if nothing of that septic goes through, Act 250 coming here, right? It's just raw land making the store...
I understand, but we are saying that the procedure for a boundary line adjustment in this case, be it step one, two, or three, is the same as a subdivision.
I'd like to say something. It's my understanding, from what you said earlier, that there is no specific language which says what exactly is a boundary line adjustment and what is not a boundary line adjustment.
I didn't say that.
You said we don't have specific language.
No, we were speaking about, there is some guidance on the website on what may sort of be, have any review waived, or as an exemption.
You said it was open to interpretation.
That was the use of the word substantial, or not. Right, and that's exactly right. So, and that, that's a separate issue. So, that's, there is no specific language around what receives an automatic exemption from review.
Okay.
So, you know, just as you have all observed, a substantial part of the review of the coal subdivision, that's the procedure that the town has. And it's frankly not onerous. It's frankly nowhere near the kind of review you're ultimately gonna need through Act 250.
Completely.
I mean, it's not that, it's not a bad...
No, but I think we're just trying to first get one thing, right?
And it just has to go through a procedure. It's not, we have faith, the theme's to give it with an exemption. And we have said that at minimum, the bulk of it, the Balaic piece, will need to go through subdivision review.
But we're not asking for the Balaic piece right now. We're simply asking for the Enman-Lapage boundary line adjustment for review, so...
So, when we get a completed application and when it's forwarded to us, we can talk to you about scheduling a hearing, whether the application is complete.
Okay. Given all this, given the fact that you have the authority, and I'm not debating on that. There are four people involved, basically, other than the Planning Commission in this transaction. There are two property owners, there's Lisa who's put her heart, soul, and funds into this project. There's Andy, who is always considered the best for this town. We know what your requirements are. How can we help these people get this project going? Because nobody here is gonna argue that it doesn't benefit the town if we can get this thing completed. How can we help them do it? And you're saying you're gonna go through every procedure, fine. But let's, can we accelerate this process? Can we do anything to help the four people who are already in agreement and the town who can use this? Get this thing going? We understand, maybe we're dealing with people who may not know all the regulations. But how can this board help these people complete this project? If there's no way to do it, okay. That's all.
I don't know how to answer that, how we can help you. We don't really know what the project is. We know the basic goal is to open the store, but that's about it. We don't know any specifics.
Right, but if we're looking at just raw land for right now, and then...
We don't do that, we're not doing right now. So, we're doing, what is the project? This has been represented as being part of a project.
But it still would need to be approved.
I'm thinking we're going in circles.
We are going in circles.
It doesn't matter.
And all it asks is, what can we do to help these people be caused? There is no doubt.
No doubt, we were, that was the whole point.
Okay, so Chris, do we have anything else? Do you guys have any questions for them?
I guess.
Do you have anything?
The only question... I don't think we've completely answered it, is they wanted to know if the Enman, if we would approve the Enman boundary line adjustment. And from my understanding, what we've told them, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that they need to finish submitting, or submit a correct application for that boundary line adjustment first.
That's what Faith has said, that's my understanding.
Yes, for that one.
For that one. Those two aspects, and also the plans themselves need to be...
What we're saying they need to do is submit a correct application, and then we can move forward to the reviewing, correct?
Yes.
That's, no, that's just one item.
But just for clarity's sake, you can get the additional signature, and you can also document, okay, there's gonna be adjustments to the land usage, but that doesn't fully encompass potential plans or projects that that property would ultimately involve. For example, like, so, you, like, you couldn't make that, you were saying before, you'd need the full wastewater details for Andy's property, right? So, would you need all of those details for the minor property as well? Considering it would be encompassed in a larger plan moving forward.
I think I have clarified what, from my perspective as administrative officer, I would need to save the application for this boundary line adjustment between Enman and Kivvy to be complete.
Right.
And I would also like to clarify that the reason, one of the reasons why we're, I am treating this as seriously as I am, is that because it is part of a bigger project.
Right.
And these incremental issues therefore have to be clarified.
Right.
But obviously, if the application for the boundary line adjustment, this first one, is complete, then I will forward it to the Planning Commission, who will make a determination.
But will their determination also depend on what is potentially planned for the additional property as well? Not, like, it's, I'm not being...
Well, I, I'm not just, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, you wanted further information on the wastewater, right?
So, we should also incorporate that in any, just so we don't waste anyone's time, right? Like, if that's, that's part of the future plan, right?
That, I mean, I'm...
Would it be beneficial, seriously? Would it be beneficial?
Real talk, like, the best plan, in my opinion, for you to get this done...
It's just everything.
Show the plans, not just to us, but to the Act 250 coordinator, to public, the public water supply people, and to Chris Tomberg. Chris said he is also frustrated that he's not, he does not have full awareness of where this is going. He can do these, he's fully authorized to do little incremental things. He's not a land use review guy. He cares about, is this one of, is this one little thing gonna impact groundwater? That's his job.
Can I ask a question, though?
Sure.
So, but if we, if with the land itself, right? I would have to go through all of those things anyway. Come here with my plans, Act 250, I'd have to talk to Quinn, Mann, about all that stuff. So, I'd still have to go through all that process anyway. You know, no one's trying to go around and hide the fact that I'm trying to do a commercial septic with a boundary transfer, right? Like, I'd have to go through all of those steps anyway.
Yeah, and that's why land boundary parcel division and boundary changes ideally should be done when the project is fairly sure to go forward.
So, then does that...
You can't do that unless you obtain the Balaic parcel.
Yeah, well, that's what they recommend it.
You cannot do until you did this, so it's...
So, then...
So, yeah, one brief comment on that. I don't know what you were told about that, but at least my understanding of that is that it's not true. You can have a design with an agreement of a...
Yeah, well, I can send the preliminary.
Because all three of you could be part of the Act 250. The minute that you involved, is the term they use, you know what I'm saying? And you involve the other property, Act 250 will start it through you.
Yeah, so...
You don't have to buy it.
So, then, wouldn't I still have to do a subdivision? And even if you had all of the...
Depending on what the site plan is and what the plan is...
So, what is it?
Engineering design is. It may be that you're better off buying the whole thing. I don't know, we don't know what the plan is. And that's why it's so hard for us to review land use changes and parcel line changes without...
What if no land changes, other than it's just owned by the store? And there is no septic, I'm just saying...
If you bought the entire Balaic property, then this would, this would go pretty much more directly into Act 250. And then we can start from there, which would probably be actually easier for us. Because the little piecemeal thing, we don't know where this is from.
No, I understand, it's just, it's, I don't...
Yeah, it's hard for us to know what you guys are all planning on doing. And we need that to, I think, to properly review each piece. When we approve boundary line changes, they're real, they are, they're in the town records. And we don't, in my opinion, is that we don't like making those changes without motivation for them, especially when they're impactful to our only village.
Yeah, but you'd still have a say in the septic stuff afterwards, right? And, like, genuine question.
In Act 250, we certainly do.
Yeah, so even, so you'd still see all the plans and everything?
Yeah, Andy, I interrupted you, sorry.
That's all right. Look, I have a couple of things I wanna say. One is, I don't think there's anyone in this room that wouldn't agree that reopening the store would be a great thing. And no one in this room or in the town would disagree with, or question Alyssa's intentions and goodwill in trying to get the store reopened and to make it a more enjoyable place to visit. That's not the issue here. We can applaud your efforts, but also insist that you follow the rules like anyone else. And I don't say that to be, to imply that you're violating the rules. I think it's clear from what you said that you didn't, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like you said that you didn't understand what was required of you, and you've been proceeding with some degree of ignorance about what we expect. I think the fact, and I've also detected, you know, in one gentleman's comments, a tone of exasperation, that it's, here we are at the end of the year, and we've, you know, what can we do to get this done after, after all this? And I think all of this ties together in the fact that customarily, when someone, whether it's, you know, a novice or an experienced developer, has a project they wanna do, they put the project together in a package, and they come to the Planning Commission or the state and say, here's our project. This is what we wanna do. And we, like the state, can then review the entirety of the project and determine, you know, make the necessary determinations. And it's unfortunate that this project has, or has not been brought to us, was in fact only brought to us last month for the first time. And it's unfortunate that... Sorry? Yeah, no, I understand that, I'm, you know, no apology necessary, but it's, my point is, it's not, it's not our fault. It's not the commission's fault that we're, we're in this position. So, you know, how can we, you know, the question's been asked, you know, how can we best assist? And the, we, the commission best assists by being presented with a complete project package that we can look at and understand and make decisions about. And, and, you know, what I infer between, you know, or hear between the lines, so to speak, is that you've been, you've been treating this in a stepwise fashion, at least in part, because, you know, if you don't get the septic approval, you don't wanna, you know, spend the money to buy all or part of the Balaic land. But developers deal with that, you know, contingency all the time. You can have contracts that say, you know, our obligation to purchase is contingent on X. That could be true with Lapage and Enman. It's, you know, you can structure these deals in a way that protects you. And if a developer doesn't wanna structure it that way, then they make a decision to accept a certain degree of risk. And that's okay, too, that's, that's your decision as the developer. But our responsibility is to apply our regulations, and the regulations concern any division of land for sale or development. And that's what's happening here. And we just, we've gone around on this a number of times. But it's very difficult for us to truly oversee land use development if we only see part of what the plan is.
Yeah, and just from not coming here earlier, a lot of it was because we just got everything figured out between Austin, like, Enman and Lapage, and getting the surveys done for Austin, for the Balaic's land. And then I sold this property that has a 1031 that I'm just wanting to save some money to put for the store. So, that's kind of the rush and other things, so just background on that. But anyway, thanks for your time.
You have anything, Joe?
No.
Questions? Steve, you must have something.
My thing is, if the paperwork were okay, and with the proviso, that the idea was if, to try and finish the deal with Balaic, so therefore acquire the land, I would have no problem. so therefore acquire the land, I would have no problem understanding what the overall concept is and approving the boundary line. Because it's, she's just taking the gamble as to whether she's going to acquire the BOLACs. But having said that, I still would have a hard no. I'm doing a boundary line adjustment for the BOLAC's land because I voted for and still believe it's a subdivision. Now, you know, they may have heartburn from having had, for lack of a better word, neighbors interfering with his last property line adjustment and making his life miserable. And he may not want to go through that again, but that's got nothing to do with this. So, you know, that's a different issue, and that's him.
And as I said, although it's kind of skewed, all we were asking or trying to submit at this time is for the Enman-LePage boundary line adjustment. I think you said it perfectly. If it goes any further than Alyssa's taking any risk, then that will be another review process for the board to take.
Yeah, so we'll get that signature for you.
We'll also need to get illegible and correct sketch notes. This has to be a note of fact from the previous...
Yeah, we'll do that.
Which is correct, and it can't just be a blown-up PDF because there's quite a lot of illegible...
Steve Rose should have the original of that. The documents for recording, that was like an eight and a half by 11 sheet that got...
Yeah, we had it my way.
Okay, right. Just so I think it's in the record, and I don't think, because I think it's sort of gotten muddy. The urgency that you are trying to convey to us is that, news are a little bit unclear. The stage transfer is dependent on your acquisition in one way or another of this strip of land that would connect you to the BOLAC. That in itself doesn't seem to be what would satisfy your immediate need. There's something else that we need to...
Well, I think my...
You need to make another acquisition in response to that, right?
She needs the acquisition of the LePage, and then no matter what, whether it goes...
Understood, but what I'm asking is just so we understand the sensitivities here. You're saying that, hoping that we take into account that you have a financial obligation to spend some money by the end of the year. And that would not, you're not talking about acquisition of the Enman property. You're talking about something else, correct?
Yeah, I was talking about the, because my mind was still on the November meeting because I wasn't able to hear. So, it sounds like there's kind of like two things going on. But yes, but it sounds like this is a subdivision, full stop.
You're talking about using those funds that you've now acquired to purchase the BOLAC.
That was why I sold the property, was to get part of this parcel.
Just so we can sort of, and we'll put you at ease because it's not going to be helpful, but the lack of action on this won't help you either way.
Well, it sounds like it's not happening, so...
Which one?
This, it sounds like nothing's going to happen by the end of the year, basically.
So, I mean, theoretically, we could have had for today, we could have had, I know there's other considerations, we could have had a subdivision application for the BOLAC.
Yeah.
And we would not have had, you know, I guess if we had had this before us in October, we could have had a sketch plan review in November, a hearing in December, and you could have purchased...
Next time I ever do this, I will know.
Yeah, so it takes 90 days to turn something around.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know we're getting, you know, some people in the audience and probably in the community that are going to think that we are stopping you from doing that. But these sort of transactions in the town and in the state do have long arcs, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And there's nothing that we could have done today to allow you to purchase a lot of land by the end of the year.
If it was looked at just raw land, and then, you know, God this...
But you hear what I'm saying?
I understand.
Unless you just bought the whole parcel, there's nothing we could have done to divide that land either in any fashion for you by the end of the year. It's just that time doesn't work out.
I was just going to say for your 1031, like you were saying, take along by the land. It's not a choice. It's, I'm oversimplifying, but that would probably satisfy, honestly.
Anything else?
You know, your 1031 requirement.
To buy the whole land. Cool.
And as you said before, if you want the whole property, the subdivision issue goes away.
And if there is a, you know, earnest interest in the community, that's more than just words or putting pressure on the Planning Commission, you can probably find that money to help you form another LLC. So, you know, it's not our place to give you suggestions, but we were asked. We were asked, so...
We always say you have a point, but not...
Well, sorry for holding you guys here past.
No, it's what we're here for. You know, we have a job to do. It's the only, essentially only regulations the town has. It's a town with almost no regulations.
Yeah.
This would be a lot harder than every other town, believe me.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have zoning to go through first. But this is what we do have, and we have to administer what we have. So, we, I'm going to ask the commission if there's anything else to discuss, but I think, you know, we would like to be helpful to you. And we can certainly be, you know, a partner in reviewing any designs you have. We would like to see them at some point.
Yeah.
Guys, anything else?
Not from me.
Well, thank you.
Anything from, yeah, do you have any...
No, I will just get the signature from Austin and Evan.
Any more comments from the audience?
Well, I don't think you're evil people, no.
Well, thanks for that.
You know, and I don't have the education. I'm just looking at what we can do to these people. I don't know.
Well, you've got one suggestion for you.
I don't.
Right, so there's one suggestion that's floating. If there's a, yeah, if this is going to be an issue of there is a shortfall of money...
Well, when it's personal funds going into it.
Right, but what I'm saying is, if you can find partners in the community, then that sounds like it shouldn't be an issue if the property is legitimately for sale.
Can I ask a question? So, you have not ruled tonight that they cannot do the two parcel lot line change because the documents that came to you just to do that, right? Were not sufficient, and therefore they're not in a position to rule on that? So, you have not ruled on that tonight?
Yeah, I haven't officially presented the application to the Planning Commission.
Because it doesn't have a signature from Austin.
Okay, okay. So, you did not rule negatively?
No. It wasn't you.
All right, we'll be back.
And because, don't minor lot line changes require anything more than sketches and the two parties agree? Like, if I wanted to move my fence three feet with my neighbor, would that require anything except coming to you with a sketch? My neighbor and I saying, here's what we want to do?
So, that's something that, at the moment, in my opinion... So, at the moment, that is something that is... Face discretion on whether that is, has a significance that needs further review.
Okay.
Sounds like the way you're describing it is it's intentionally insignificant. So, that's something that could probably be done with administrative review.
That's why I looked at this change. The intent is a whole other story.
Well, I'm only responding to your hypothetical.
Yeah, yeah. But it is possible to not go through all of this for a minor lot line change, and that it just goes to you and you disagree to it.
But it's truly independent and fairly objectively insignificant, but not when it's connected to a larger project and objectively significant. I think that's in a nutshell.
I'm not a lawyer, so I don't, the connection thing is beyond me. The intent and the connection thing is beyond me, but that's okay. I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah, anything else, guys?
What is the largest boundary transfer that's been done? Can you do like 50 to 50 acres to... 50 acres?
I don't have that hand, but you can say that again, 50.
I mean, can you do a boundary transfer of like 30 acres to 10 acres? If it's true...
I would say most people would call that fairly significant.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
The guidance says if it's substantial, it goes to... Yeah, and if we take Ronald's example of three feet between him and his neighbor out of his 100-acre property, I think we could call that insubstantial. But if it's almost 50% of the property...
If I might just jump in, I think there are multiple considerations that would make it significant or not. And, you know, the size or relative size of the change is one factor. Whether it's going from residential to commercial is another factor. Whether it's being sold or it's just, you know, two neighbors agreeing to move along is another factor. You know, whether it's a part of a larger project that has, you know... I guess what I was suggesting is we should resist focusing on just, you know, if we do X, then are we okay? You have to look at, and this is going back to what we've said many times over in this meeting. You have to look at the whole package, and then you can understand whether this is something that may be exempt because it's just so minor that it's not worthy of review. Our jurisdiction is over, you know, any division of land for sale or development. And the AO, as John says, has some discretion to say, yeah, this is too insignificant to require going through the entire process. But making that decision, I think, depends on multiple factors, not just, is it five acres, 10 acres, or, you know, a quarter of an acre?
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And thank you for giving me the...
Be careful out there, it was very slippery.
I don't think we have any business.
Watch out.
Understand.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No unfinished business? Do you have anything else? Public comments?
I don't have a comment.
Any more?
I was just going to say, you don't know where the floor again, that's just easy code. You've heard from me more than enough.
Well, you have an opportunity.
Never.
This is the moment.
I just think that it got confounded by the BOLAC lot line change and this lot line change. And I know your point, it's all one package, and that's why I did see it as separate. And although there's intent, the word intent is, they may never be able to get BOLAC's piece. They may never be able to do it. They're willing to do this, actually, each piece, big blue, or, here's a nice square, and that stupid little L-shaped goes to the store.
And we got the shed out, which you called...
Yeah, that ugly shed, you know, Enman weeds, because he thought he would sell it to them. So, as a standalone proposition, it seems to be a lot line change to benefit both parties. Doesn't affect any wastewater issues.
But I think, as Andy was just mentioning, and as I said originally, in response to how to move forward on the BLA, it's not just this.
But it is, though. They may not, BOLACs may not sell it to them.
But see, that's the urgency, right? So, we're getting back to it.
By the way, I agree with that. Urgency is irrelevant.
Well, no, at this point, it's irrelevant because if the 1031 doesn't matter, this...
No, I just think that the fact that this could be a bigger project, as you said, sometimes people buy a parcel and gamble that they may be able to...
Let me just say this, in my opinion, if it turns out that none of this is going forward, and the town is going to have to work with you to find some other solution, because like at the end of the day, we don't want a situation where we don't have a store. I think there's not a person here that wants that. If this is not the way that's going to be approved by the state, and also just to be clear, we are not the ones who approve wastewater systems. We're not doing that. So, if that doesn't go forward, you're going to have to work with us to find something else. And we're available for that. Public wastewater, a public wastewater system is something that the town has contemplated many times. It would certainly be appropriate here. If that all doesn't happen, and you come back and say, I still want to put a picnic table there. Now, it is truly just this, we want to have space for some outdoor seating, then that's a different plan, and it truly could be independent. But as it's been presented to us, it's not...
But today, they presented it differently, right? They asked for something different today. Last week, last month, they did ask for the big plan, and you decided it was something you didn't understand.
That's what I'm saying, is that...
I was just trying to clarify from the last meeting, because I wasn't able to be here.
If this is not to say that, and we apparently are going to get this next month, so whether or not it's connected to it or not, it sounds like it will come for review, this one little piece. I would suggest, and I have before, I'll do it again, I would suggest that you bring the thing to us, the whole package. I think it's going to be a lot better for everybody if it's reviewed that way, rather than strung along and, you know, stretched out for another six months to a year. Here's the thing, here's what we're talking about. And independent of that, like I said, if there's an urgency, if this boundary line adjustment is not directly connected to the urgency, then it can come back. You can do it now, if you want to, it's up to you, whether you want to pursue this with faith now or wait till it's, there's like many options. These are just my opinions. Push this one little piece now and see if it gets, if we can make it as independent as possible. I don't think it's going to be very difficult. Show us the whole plan and have that reviewed as an omnibus. Or in the event that none of this is going to go forward, then review the pieces that you need to just make it a better lot for yourself that has nothing to do with wastewater.
The intent is the interesting one, again. If I came in, not me, as Alyssa, if I came in next month, we decided we're not going to put a septic in, we're going to stick with grandfather with four seats, and I want it better, I could lie to you, all right? I'm being honest, I'm lying to you, right? In other words, my intent is very hard to determine. You can't look into my mind and know. Now, they put something on paper, they retract it, and they come back and say, we're withdrawing everything we said to you, we're coming back, we want to do this minor lot line change because both parcels are better. They tried to do that today, I think, and I understand your viewpoint, that it's a big... But I think they tried to do that, and I thought it was, again, I'm not a lawyer, but I thought it was a legitimate piece to do, independent of any, because nothing else may happen.
Okay, so regarding whether or not false representations are...
Right.
So, when a permit is issued, the commission has ongoing jurisdiction. If you have lied or misrepresented the future land use or intended use of the property, you will violate the conditions of your permit.
Okay, I agree with all of that, and I'm just trying to...
Why is the representation...
Well, I guess because intent...
I'm trying to deal with the word intent.
Then you, so when, if there's a substantial change in the use of the land that is not as it was presented in the conditions of the permit or as specified in the permit, I think you're expected to, in my opinion, I think you're expected to seek an amendment. I think you're expected to, in my opinion, I think you're expected to seek an amendment.
I would agree.
That's exactly what you would do.
I would agree.
State permitting.
I would agree. I'm just saying it's disintent.
And then you'd be running a risk. And that's what we're trying to avoid here.
Yeah.
You would have, you would have to seek an amendment.
Do you want to approve something that we might then revoke when you change the plan? Or, you know.
Revoke a lot line change?
So we.
But couldn't you just shoot down the plan?
Say what?
Couldn't you just shoot down the plan instead of revoke? I'm just asking.
Shoot down what plan?
Rather than shooting it down, couldn't it just be changed to how it may be needed?
Yeah, I mean, this is all hypothetical. We're talking, we're trying to address a situation where there's a false, you know.
Well, it's not.
Yeah, I know, misleading.
I shouldn't have used the word not to, it's the word intent.
In this hypothetical, you've lied to the commission about the use of the property.
And I did not say, I said, I'm telling you that if, if someone did, I did not say I'm lying. She's never lied to you. And I didn't lie to you either, right?
Yeah.
Right? I didn't lie to you. I'm saying is you don't know my intent, though. And honestly, I'm lying. Like you didn't know if I, I do a subdivision of my land with, with.
No, we do know because we asked.
You didn't ask me whether I want to buy the adjacent parcel when I did my subdivision?
It wasn't involved in that.
Okay, whoever. No one asked me that I wanted to buy the adjacent parcel. It was my intent. No, maybe it wasn't my intent. That's, it's the intent. I, 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 I just don't understand why it isn't a small piece and it's separate. And it has, it has its own benefits and I don't see where it detracts from the town. That's important, by the way. Impact the wastewater, the drinking water, that this little subdivision, I didn't think, I think you're still protecting the town if you would let that one piece go through. But that's, again.
I have to read the Belmont Village Plan. Consider that.
Okay. So any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks. What was that last statement? Read the Belmont.
Yeah, we read that.
Okay. Just a quick question. If you, assuming you bought the entirety of the plot, right? And then that was subdivided, what are the specific triggers that come about from the subdivision? You mentioned Act 250, you mentioned, I'm not sure if I'm being clear. Because you mentioned obviously proceeding with the purchase, like, oh, potentially you could proceed with the purchase of the entire, entire lot. And then you said it would go directly to Act 250?
Well, you know, I'm sort of waving my hands a little bit, because the state gets to determine when 250 steps in. But what I was suggesting is that if, this would all be pretty easy if Andy was interested in subdividing. We just subdivide it, you buy it, there it is.
Did you see the conversation we had at the beginning of this meeting with Mr. Cole?
Yes, of course.
That would be how that would come.
I mean, it was, you know, 15 minutes of.
That would, we had three meetings. And it would be.
Yeah. So I don't know what is the issue with why, you know, we're doing all of this rigmarole to avoid a subdivision. But yes, so theoretically, if you block a lot from them, you could subdivide it, but then you may not even need to. You probably would want to see what your design dictates first.
Right, yeah.
But as to when this precise moment Act 250 gets triggered, that's something that they get to determine.
Okay.
I mean, that's not up to us. We would be a party.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, is it a player?
It's a.
Very tolerant child.
He's, he's pretty good. He's getting a little hungry.
Yeah, very, very accommodating, too. So we would be a party to the Act 250 proceeding and we would participate in any way we can, both, you know, in ways that you probably are already aware of. Like so the Belmont Plan and the Town Plan says what are interested in. And one of them is to see an operational store. That's something that the town wants. So, but we also would want to understand the impact to the village.
Right.
Yeah.
All journey, Brian.
Yeah, just understand the impact to the land use in the village. It's so central. You know, that's, that's just what we're expected to do. The town's folk expect that from us.
Cool.
So, thank you so much.
Yeah, have a good one.
Yep. All right. So upcoming meetings, we already said.
February 19th.
15th of January, yeah, I can't read that from here.
Yeah, 15th of January.
Call it a calendar owner.
Yeah. And then we got our hearing and meeting on the 19th of February. Anything else? I'll be on.
I'm sorry, what is that, January meeting? The 15th?
15th.
At 7:00 PM Eastern?
Hmm?
Yes, sir.
We're not doing central, sir.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Sorry?
Yes, 7:00 PM Eastern.
Thank you.
Oh my God.
9:00.
8:57, meeting adjourned.